What can I do for you? I'm looking for...
Good morning. This is May 7th. Special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start out with the regular agenda. This will be a discussion on possible action. Ray, an update from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19 updates and taking any necessary actions based on these updates. And I've got to say, it's been an interesting week here with President Trump coming to Arizona and getting a first-hand look at the Honeywell business and how they transformed their aerospace company into a production line for N95 masks. And with that being said, we've also got a little production going on in Golden Valley where there's a new company coming in and they're going to be repackaging hand sanitizers. So that should take care of our need for hand sanitizers, which apparently is still a problem in Mojave County. So companies across the nation are stepping up during this time and coming up with really good ideas on how to help America get through this crisis that we're having with the COVID-19. So Denise Burley, welcome. What does all this mean to Mojave County, I guess, is what we're here to discuss, among other things.
I don't think we've had a rule call.
Oh, thank you, Ryan.
We didn't? Okay, just want to make sure.
Ryan. All right. Could you do a rule call, please, and make sure that I'm not just talking to myself here? Appreciate it.
Supervisor Watson?
I'm pretty sure I'm here.
Supervisor Angus?
I'm here.
Supervisor Johnson?
Present.
Supervisor Gold?
Present.
Chairman Bishop?
I am here. A little absent-minded this morning, so I apologize for that.
We have a quorum.
All right, Denise.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. I have an update on a few items here, so I'll go through my list and then certainly make myself available for questions afterwards. We have a few tests or a couple of testing events coming up here shortly. One this weekend, Saturday, May 9th, in Bullhead City at the Anderson Auto Group Field House from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. that morning. It's a first-come, first-thru, first-come, first-served. It's a drive-through testing site, but there is a form that's required and that needs to be completed when people get to the front of their line and to their time. So we recommend that people go to the Sonora Quest website and download that form, complete it, and bring it with you if they plan to get tested at that particular site. Sonora Quest has notified us that they'll have 500 test kits available, so it'll be the first 500 people that come through. They anticipate also that those test results will come very quickly. It may come within about 48 hours. It is kind of the turnaround time. Some may trickle in thereafter, but a majority of those will come through in that timeframe. It really depends on the number that they have. The other event is Saturday, May 16th. That's in Lake Havasu City, and that's at the Lake Havasu City Aquatic Center. And it's also from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Same structure. Sonora Quest is also sponsoring that particular testing event, so the same process will be used to, you know, there'll be no registration. It's first-come, first-served, and then the forms will need to be downloaded before you get there. We are going to be participating in this contact tracing pilot program with ADHS. We still do not have a great deal of detail. They're still working on contract negotiations with the actual company that they will be using, which is a web-based application. And that is such that people could actually report in their temperature and they can report in some details about themselves, the contacts, and we could track them that way rather than having to be through the phone calls. Their participation in this process, as far as using the SERA system, will be optional. So it can still be a person-to-person phone call, but that's another option which may not tether them to a phone or require them to be available for one of our phone calls. So as soon as we have more information on how that can roll out or how that will roll out, we'll make sure that you are staying abreast of that. The main point I want to make there is that we can scale that up or down. We can bring ADHS in to help us as much or as little as we need, and that's one of the nice things about that. They've got an Epi team down in Phoenix that can assist us, and that's the group that would be providing that assistance. Any questions on contact tracing or the testing events?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Do you think this web-based follow-up is a good thing?
I think it could be, and I think so because it could relieve some of the workload on not just our staff, but just it adds a convenience for the actual contact themselves to be able to record information through this web-based application. But I, quite honestly, Supervisor Johnson, don't have enough information yet to know how that can work for us and getting into those nitty-gritty details yet.
It just seems to me that with a personal phone call, a lot of times you can tell things by the tone of the voice or the way they answer and maybe have follow-up questions, but that's all I have on this, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Denise? Okay. Thank you.
I want to make sure I cover the hospital capacity report and answer any questions you may have on that. The one thing I think is real important for this conversation is to know that this is really just a snapshot. And I know we've had discussions with and conversations with Warm Sea, Western Arizona Regional Medical Center, about some of the data that they had posted. And we take this snapshot off of an ADHS report. But what it doesn't give is a real complete picture of what their real capacity is. I mean, most, all of these hospitals have the capacity to surge. They've already got plans in place. They know what steps they're going to take, and they already may have these spaces ready to rock and roll when it's time. And that's not necessarily always recorded in these numbers. So what they have is, for example, listed for ICU beds is what they have today and set up and what their functioning with their current level of staffing. If they surge, they'll open up these other areas and they will bring in the staffing necessary to run those. So we just want to make sure that's clear as we're talking about this particular report and how if you look here and you see that HRMC, for example, has one ICU bed available, that may be true for their normal capacity, but they're prepared to surge and address any kind of increased capacity or increased need should it arise, and they'll manage that quite well. Any questions about hospital capacity?
Anyone have any questions? Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's one thing to say they have the capacity and the equipment to handle a surge, but how sure are we that they have the staff to handle that surge?
Well, I think we have to trust in our medical providers here that they are in a position where they feel like they could meet that need, and we have no reason not to at this point. So I feel like that's where we are. We know they've put a lot of time and energy into preparing based on what they've seen in other places. So I do believe they've seen how it can go poorly and how it can go well. And so I think they've all taken the steps that they've needed to be prepared in the event something does occur and we see a surge or a rise in cases that need hospitalization.
All right, so we don't check to see if they have a list of people that are available to fill those hospitals?
No, sir. We do not.
So we're doing the trust on the hospitals and trust on people filling the web-based in accurately?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I did have a question. You might have already answered this, Denise. On the information that we receive regarding, from your office, regarding the hospitals and the amount of beds available and the amount of equipment available, is the amount of beds listed their existing capacity or is that, does that include their, I would assume they have reserve or potential capacity that where they could increase like what you discussed?
Correct.
Is that information the existing capacity or does that include all available or potentially available capacity?
What you see is their current and normal capacity for ICU beds. So what you don't see in these numbers is that surge capacity, those additional beds that they have set aside to address any kind of surge or increased need for hospitalizations.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay. All right. Okay. Let's see here. So discrepancy in the death count. I wanted to address that now. And I do have Anna Scherzer, our epidemiologist, who is on the phone participating remotely, who can answer some of these questions because she's much more well-versed in confirmed versus probable and some of the details that go into those decisions and how they're made. And then I can talk about a recommendation moving forward. So we do have a discrepancy of two. And the difference here is that with the Arizona Department of Health Services, I think I might have mentioned this on Monday, but with the Arizona Department of Health Services, they are combining confirmed and probable in their death counts. And in so doing, at this point, we have only listed confirmed cases. And this is something that is helpful in a way to try to keep things clean, but as we move forward, that kind of discrepancy also can be very confusing to the public. And I guess in the grand scheme of things, the question really becomes, how important is it to keep it separate? ADHS does not have any plans to separate out those numbers at this point in time. It's not to say that they won't, and they've made that clear moving forward. As they are looking at data and looking at ways to provide more data, they consider a lot of things over time and try to address the public's concerns and questions. But at this time, they don't plan to separate out confirmed and probable. And so if you hover over that number on the ADHS website, it will tell you that it's both. But Anna, if you could explain the difference between the confirmed case and a probable case, and then we can talk about maybe what that looks like for us moving forward or what we'd like to recommend.
Well, I'm going to assume that you are speaking about the deaths because they're a lot easier to discuss in terms of confirmed than probable.
Yes, correct.
And the bottom line is if we have a person who dies as a resident of Mojave County and their death certificate has written onto it by the certifier that the cause of death or a contributing factor to the death is COVID-19, then that will become a probable case if that person has never been tested with a positive PCR test result. So it's pretty simple. What you see in terms of probable deaths are the ones that did not have the confirmatory lab testing, but there was enough of a suspicion by the person who filled out the death certificate to feel that COVID contributed to or caused the death.
So, okay. Right, right. And those individuals won't be tested. Many of the, well, the two that we have, for example, will not be, as I understand it, going to the medical examiner's office. That cause of death has been determined, so they won't be tested. And so that leaves us with two probable cases in this case that we need to either identify and include in our count, in our death counts, and then also add an asterisk to our dashboard, which indicates that our numbers also include probable cases. Or we need to have them separated out, which puts us kind of at a difference from ADHS numbers at that rate. So my...
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Is any other county doing this?
Is any other county recording the probable cases in with their confirmed? Is that...
Oh, yeah. Are we, yes, are we the only one that's differentiating from ADHS?
You know, I apologize. I haven't checked the other county websites, and I can certainly do so before we make any changes to ours and make a more firm recommendation on that. I know that there is one, Maricopa County does plan to separate theirs out in confirmed and probable. I can speak for them, but I'd need to go and speak with some of the epidemiologists from the other counties and learn whether or not they are going to be assuming the ADHS position or separating them out.
Okay. My other thing, I guess more of a, something we could follow up with later if we want. I have a little problem with doctors saying, well, it kind of looks like it could have been COVID. When they're doing a death certificate, it's one thing a doctor can sign off if he's been treating somebody for, say, heart disease and he finally succumbs and the doctor says, I've been treating for six months and his heart was failing and he died of, you know, the heart failure. But I have a real problem that these doctors are just signing off saying possible COVID and they've never tested them.
Right, and that's what we're contending with when we get to these probable cases. And that's certainly a provider's discretion to use those terms and to check that box. So...
I don't know if it's his discretion or not. He's supposed to be a trained professional and give a professional opinion. I mean, families depend on that and, you know, prove that the person wasn't murdered.
I definitely understand your concern, Supervisor Johnson. So is the direction that we learn a little bit more about what other counties, how other counties are addressing this, would that be what you would like us to do first, and then we can report that back to you and get a sense of what you all would like to see on our dashboard?
I think that would be valuable information that the entire board would appreciate, Denise. I also wanted to ask you a few questions that came up at the press conference a few days ago as to what qualifies as a hotspot. So a Kingman nursing home was identified as a hotspot for the virus last week during that press conference. How many COVID-19 positive cases and deaths are connected with that particular facility? I know you gave us numbers on the overall, but can we get more specific numbers out there?
You know, let me check on that for you, okay?
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't have those answers for you at this moment, so I will check.
Okay. Because I know you said in an email that 11 of the 17 deaths in Mojave County were associated with long-term care facilities, but it didn't narrow those down as to where they were. And I think there's five different long-term health facilities. So another question, can you tell me whether or not they're connected to a business or a building or connected in a string of people? How many other hotspots do we have in the county where a dozen or more cases have been reported other than the long-term care facilities? Do we have other hotspots?
Anna, are you available to answer that question?
So for a dozen or more cases at a location or facility, there would just be, I'm thinking, possibly two long-term care facilities and a healthcare facility.
That was a healthcare facility?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and then if there's been no announcement or warning to the public about these hotspots, so how are they managed in terms of cautioning people about hotspots? So like where they work, where they visit, where they reside? Are we going to be able to provide that information to the public?
So you're asking whether or not we would provide information, specific information on where those individuals have been? I mean, we do follow up with the individuals as part of the contact tracing, but Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do not follow up with the patients. It's merely the staff. Is that correct?
Where were you speaking about the long-term care facilities, patients versus staff?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm clear on the question. I'm sorry.
So I think the public is wanting to know if there are hotspots in their communities that maybe they should be avoiding, and can we provide that information to them without compromising any patient confidentiality? I mean, kind of like what we did with the library. I mean, that was a different situation, I know, but...
Sure, it was. Yeah, and the difference here is that with long-term care facilities, assisted care facilities, those are people's homes, and we don't divulge personal addresses for anybody. And if this is their home, we don't, we still don't divulge personal addresses. So that would be too much identifying information for that individual, and it's just not our practice to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hendricks.
I wanted to go back to the discrepancy between our numbers and the Department of Health's numbers. If that's truly a point of contention and confusing people, I'm not sure what the advantage is of us reporting a different number. Would the Board consider possibly reporting the same numbers and just asterisk it and qualify it and say, oh, these numbers represent two cases that no testing was performed and they weren't confirmed as actual COVID cases? If you qualified that, I don't see that there would be an issue for reporting the same numbers as the Department of Health reports.
Thank you. And actually, I'm getting text messages from one of my staff who's actually right now checking some of the other counties. And so far, looking at Coconino, Yuma, Yavapai, and Hila, they do not separate them out.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
I agree with Mr. Hendricks on the asterisk for the time being. I guess going back, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but these ones that aren't confirmed, why aren't, or can they do a test on these people or should they do a test if they're saying that they're possibly COVID-related? Shouldn't they run a test on them or can they run a blood test or something afterward?
There have been tests run on other individuals, I know, but, you know, it's again at the discretion of the doctor in charge, and they're making those decisions. And if they choose not to test that individual and base their decision on the other evidence that they have available to them, then that is, in the end, what we use as our, you know, and what we're provided.
Well, I guess with the economy being shut down and the nationwide pandemic, I would think we'd need more than, you know, the doctor deciding what he wants to do. I mean, we need to keep accurate numbers. I would think that would be mandated.
You know, I don't have any control over that aspect of it and that realm, so we rely purely on what the physician uses for their cause of death, and so does vital records. The vital records, death records certainly reflect that as well.
Can I add to that, Denise?
Certainly.
I just want to point out that that indeed is kind of the point of having a probable case definition, is to point out that we can't say for certain, but there is some pretty good evidence.
I guess, Madam Chair, one last statement is we can't say for certain, well, we can't say for certain, but we could say for certain if they would test them.
Correct. If they did test them, we would get those, I mean, those results would be returned and we would know. Correct. Okay. Let's see here. I do want to provide you an update on, we've talked before in the past about recovery and using that term and moving forward. We did learn that the Arizona Department of Health Services is looking at a different term, and so we're still looking at how we can actually record and document recovered cases and add that to our dashboard. My concern, again, is about having any kind of conflicting data to the Arizona Department of Health Services and how that might. They're going to be using the word survived in part because, and I actually spoke with ADHS this morning, and they indicated there's really no clear definition for either. So for survived, they're just looking at that as being a little bit cleaner, and they will be, they haven't actually made the determination yet that that will go up on their dashboard. They're still considering it. We actually have Mayor Schumacher, the epidemiologist that we've hired to assist us, looking into how we could report recovered here in our county. And she did actually create a definition, which we may move forward with, but again, it would be different than ADHS. So for our cases, recovered would be a case who had not died at the time we completed or closed the case. And that would seem to be kind of the easiest way for us to measure. And we can usually pull this information out of the MedSys database, so it's something that we can draw from and try to make as clean as possible. But I do want to make sure that you understand that if ADHS moves forward with their survival definition, that, or survived, that will be a different measure than how we would be measuring recovered. Questions?
Any other questions?
Nope. Yeah. Okay. Let's see. I think at this time, I don't have any other particular points to make and any other things to cover unless you have some additional questions.
Okay, thank you. I know our governor's been challenged with balancing safety with the economic devastation with, and so many were happy to hear that some restrictions are being lifted. And that brings us to a next item that we need to discuss, and that's opening our county offices, those that have been somewhat closed. And I'd like to find out how we're going forward with the, with that, with the exception of our libraries, which I think will be closed until the 20th. Is that right, Mr. Hendricks?
Madam Chairman, I did want to bring up that the Board on March 20th voted to have the libraries closed to the public for 60 days. So that brings it to roughly May 20th at the, if the order is not extended, the library should be opening up limited, on a limited basis, to allow the public in. And I've talked to Kathy about that, and she's got a very well-thought-out staged plan to move from not having any public contact to curbside service, which she's probably going to implement that prior to the 20th. to implement that prior to the 20th, and then start moving to allow patriots to repatrianize the library. Now, regarding the county operations, general, there are some offices that had found ways to not have contact with the public by having drop-offs or other things. And there are some offices that are continuing to operate in that regard. And what I would like to talk about first is county's capabilities, you know, to comply with CDC guidelines and to try to obtain some direction from the Board on moving forward to start opening up those individual areas. And I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about currently. Public Works, in their lobby, they've actually implemented lines on the floor to where people have to stay to accommodate social distancing when dealing with the public, or dealing with our Public Works people. They've done that very effectively. They're also looking at putting up, for lack of a better term, sneeze shields. They're doing disinfectant, disinfecting of the travel areas and of the places where the COVID could be spread. Denise, I've talked to Denise about the availability of masks, and we're having trouble with hand sanitizers, but to try to move towards sanitary wipes to make sure that those are available, not only currently, which I believe they are, but for our continued operation. So in contrast with what Public Works is doing, Development Services actually has their doors closed, and they have for quite some time. And what they do is they require either people to make, to call in advance and get served over the phone, or they have drop-offs to where plans are dropped off and then quarantined and then taken in for processing. What I would ask the Board, because of the Governor's order to have even restaurants opened on a limited basis complying with CDC guidelines on the 11th, that for all county operations, with the exception of the library, and the elected officials, and the courts, who are under their own auspices, to go ahead and, at least in our administration, ask for them to open up to the public, those that are not, and to open up in accordance with the CDC guidelines. And if they have any questions or need any information, I've asked Public Works and Procurement and the Health Department and our Emergency Management to help identify those needs and to provide the PPEs necessary so that they could safely function. Would, I also, there's also been conversation regarding our janitorial and cleaning, and Public Works is ready to address that with you today, I believe, and would like to give them an opportunity to actually speak and tell you what their plans are to relay that to the Board so that you're aware of their efforts. But with all this said, at the end of the day today, I would ask that the Board provide some direction on that May 11 date on getting the rest of administration at least open. And I would ask with that, that the Board provides some flexibility to our elected officials because they're responsible to their citizens on determining adequacy of service in that regard. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. So it's your recommendation that all county offices, with those exceptions, work toward being open by the 11th, if not before?
I make that recommendation because the order by the Governor's office and the steps that he's taken and the state's taken, and I believe that at least administrations should follow suit with those directives.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any of the supervisors?
Would that be necessary for an action?
With the Board making that, the Board actually set earlier, set policy regarding the staying closed and the limiting of our, providing service to our citizens. Instead of, it just coming from me, I believe it's important for the Board to actually provide that direction.
A motion would be required?
I think so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then, at this point, to then open our constituent offices on May the 11th, which would, at the same time, not include elected, and you had two other categories.
And if I could, it would be the library and elected officials, but it would be to open it, have the limited opening to the public in accordance with CDC guidelines and state guidelines.
You got that recorded properly?
Correct. And actually, you know, one of the things that we've been doing is getting concurrence from our Health Director, because she obviously has to be the most important person to have buy-in on this.
And I think, I think on that list was also the courts as well.
Yeah, the courts are under their own auspices. They're under a different set of rules than we are. They're being directed by the presiding judge.
Right. I believe I was attempting to exclude the courts, the electeds, and the library. Those three, I believe, would be excluded from that motion.
Questions?
We have a motion and a second, and Supervisor Gold, did you have a question?
Supervisor Johnson.
Oh, Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have somebody from Public Works there to talk about what kind of clean supplies they have available.
Yes, we do. We have Steve Lekowski coming to the podium, and we also have Mr. Meeting here.
My question is, the available supplies we have, nobody else seems to be able to get these sanitizing things that we need. How are we going to be able to not only keep our employees safe from wiping down counters, et cetera, and the library to wipe down every book if they have to hand them out? We also have the areas where the public comes into. Are we going to be wiping those down every time that somebody comes in and leaves?
Good afternoon, Chairman Bishop, members of the Board, Supervisor Johnson. I appreciate your important question, and I would like to introduce our Engineering Manager in Charge of Facilities, John Meeting. I'll preface that by stating that the CDC has set forward guidelines on type of product and some general methods for cleaning as well as disinfecting. And I think there's an important distinction between the two, cleaning and disinfecting. Public Works has elevated our level of attention and have gone above that, and we are prepared and committed to, in fact, have already been doing this, performing what I call a sanitation policy and action plan whereby, in addition to our regular custodial cleaning duties of public spaces, there are going to be certain designated areas that will be sanitized on an enhanced schedule, and that enhanced schedule would be consistent with periods of overlap building occupancy. We aim to provide at start of shift, mid-shift, and end of shift for our custodians, certain sanitizing of high-touch areas like exterior access doors, restrooms like handles, pulls, latches, flush valve handles, et cetera. In the interior common areas, we're going to take a look at the elevator buttons and also door handles, the passageways that are in common conference rooms. So, as well as some miscellaneous items, we'll pay attention to the vending machine, touchpads and keypad. So that's kind of an enhanced action plan that's prescribed by Public Works. Obviously, we've been mindful of CDC guidelines, but we elevated it and took it to this level. And a quick comment before I turn over to John for his remarks on our supplies. We've been diligent in working with Procurement in holding to, making every attempt and staying on our orders, working through our cooperative contract vendors. We have not been chasing down third-party websites that make false promises, or even Amazon, which, as we all know, actually is a storefront for a lot of third-party vendors. The challenge with that is we don't get delay, I'm sorry, we don't get delivery commitments. Delays are very much a real possibility. And then when you work with those third-party companies, even though it's an Amazon storefront, as we know, the third-party companies can be delay, can be lax, can be outright just stubborn about even making a refund. So, you know, in the care of public funds, we're working direct with our cooperative contract vendors. We feel very well that the manufacturers of these products, whether they're masks, sanitizing substances, et cetera, they're going to be most likely turning to the cooperative vendors, those, you know, vendors that are well-established, and providing their supplies to get them out to market through them, rather than work with these more independent companies. But John, if you can elaborate on our supplies?
Our supply system, Supervisor Johnson, is tight. It's strained. If you allow me a minute to go through our process, it might answer a number of your questions that you've just asked. We currently use three separate products that are EPA-listed and approved for the COVID-19 cleaning and other bacteria cleaning. I brought some show-and-tell with us today. There are several products that we get from vendors that we use. With the supply issue being what it is, a lot of these chemicals and products are at somewhat tight. So we have the flexibility within our cleaning processes to be able to jump back and forth between these products, and we even have had to build our own homemade stuff. This is an example. We found a bucket from Waxy. We found a roll of towels from L&amp;M Foods and a hydrogen peroxide-based disinfectant that we built, and we can manufacture here in all of our facilities that we can dispense to whatever place needs it. Now, the reason I bring spray bottles and wipes to your attention, Supervisor Johnson, is that because our supply chain is tight, we want to reduce the demand as much as possible. Now, the wipes have a set amount of chemical dispensed. Every wipe you pull out is damp, it's not soaking wet. It allows us to control the usage of the chemical a lot faster than you can at variable spray bottles. Some of our janitors just hose a place down and get it soaking wet, others just spritz, and so you have a little demand, you're able to control the demand a little bit better with a wipe situation. So we're working both ends of the supply and demand curve there to try to balance this whole thing out and keep on rolling. Now, talking about our various vendors, Steve mentioned that a minute ago, we have worked with our suppliers. Our suppliers understand that we're a government agency. We have had a contract with these guys for quite a while, and as such, they want to maintain that business model going forward. So they've at least supplied about 50% of our order if they were short, and we've been able to limp by with short orders and stuff. I will say, we still have backlogged items and other items that were plentiful at the start of this whole process, say the gloves, the protective gloves, those are starting to become in short supply. But as the supply chains move and as this thing kind of matures, people are kind of coming up with other solutions for those. And so at the moment, I see if we were to open up the county buildings, we probably, at this point, I can see that we'll be able to stay up with the additional sanitization loads as well as cleaning, provided the supply chains don't run out of any other products that we aren't aware of at the moment. Does that kind of answer your question?
It does a little bit. How long do you project that we can go with what we have now if we don't get more supplies?
Right now, on our shelves, countywide, and we're able to move products between one building or another if there's a high usage for some reason, we have about a week and a half worth of consumables right now on the shelves. In some cases, we have months of it because back orders were filled, and all of the back orders were filled, and they loaded us up. But in other things, such as the hand sanitizer, masks and stuff, some of that stuff is very difficult to get, and it's, you know, a week or maybe even less in some cases. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I guess that's something that we'll need to, obviously, you'll be keeping an eye on, but maybe bring back to the Board, not how that would affect our continuing opening of the facilities. Also, with the outlying areas having private contractors coming in and doing the cleaning, are we going to require them to clean more, and do we know if they have the clean supplies necessary and what we need to readjust their contracts?
The answer to that is somewhat complicated, so bear with me just a minute. Our approach to this whole thing has been following an industrial hygiene type of process model. And what that is, is either prevent the contamination from happening, or limit the contamination, or clean it all up afterwards, okay? And in order to do that, we will have to modify outside contracts. But Facilities has been installing those, I think Mike referred to them as sneeze shields. And here's an example of one in the Havasu complex. I don't know if you can see that, if that's upside down or not, but these plastic shields are installed to prevent contamination of an employee behind the shield or an individual on the other side of the shield, depending, they work both ways. It's upside down? If I can turn that.
The other way.
There you go. There you go. Okay, that is a courtroom in the Lake Havasu complex. The judge is in the highest bench there, there's a shield there. The purpose of these was that that courtroom is rather small, and the litigants and people bringing documents to the court clerk and et cetera, et cetera, it's a lot of close contact. So those were installed. We have installed some of those at the Surbat Justice Court here in Kingman. We're currently outfitting the Development Services building. However, we did run out of the plastic window material. We have another order due Monday. So where we can, we'll provide an engineering solution to limit the contamination, and that in itself reduces the amount of consumables that we use to try to put the, you know, lower the demand, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Meeting. I have no more questions with Mr. Lekowski then, but I have a question on the motion when we get there.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Meeting or Mr. Lekowski, from any Board member?
And Madam Chairman, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make clear to the Board that, for the most part, most of the county operations have opened in a limited fashion in accordance with the CDC guidelines. We're just talking about the few that haven't, to make sure that we're consistent across the Board. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman, a question then a comment. To my knowledge, of our 900 and some odd employees throughout Mojave County, I'm not aware of any of our associates that have contacted COVID-19. Is that still correct?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, I'm not aware of any at all either. I would have to call on Denise to verify that. That's not counting the courts, that's in administration.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, just one second. Denise is getting ready to answer that question.
Certainly. So you're asking if any county employee specifically, or not specific names, but you're asking if any county employee has contracted COVID-19?
I'm aware of some activities over at the court, but as for county administration outside of the court and including the library, has there been any county employees that have contracted COVID-19?
I know there have been county employees that have contracted COVID-19, so, and that is out, that is within the county and aside from the courts.
So...
Not, I don't know, specific to administration per se, but I do know that there Not, I don't know, specific to administration per se, but I do know that there are county employees that have tested positive.
And Madam Chairman, I have not been made aware of any employees that are in administration that, outside of the courts
Got it, okay.
That have contracted COVID. Has there been?
Then I would need to check on that, to determine that.
Because I'm sure that I would have been informed if there was.
Correct.
And then we would have taken steps to modify those operations in the areas that those employees worked.
Correct.
Correct? And we haven't.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, that clarifies my point. And I just want to thank Mr. Meading and Steve Lutowski in raising the elevated practices and solutions throughout the services that we offer through Mojave County. I'd say, you folks have done an excellent job up to this point, and I'm sure it will continue. Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no further questions or discussion, Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
It's my understanding we had 75 people under quarantine in the county. And just a follow-up question for Mr. Hendrix. Will we no longer be putting plans, et cetera, into boxes that aren't secured for planning and zoning?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I would, where we can continue to do business without personal contact, I would encourage that. Like in planning and zoning, it was my understanding they modified the drop box at the Bullhead City facility to make it more secure. I wasn't aware that there were any areas that were plans or specifications could be dropped and that weren't even, weren't either being watched or observed, or if they weren't, would not be secure. But I'll make sure that I go over that topic with Tim Walsh and try to ensure that that's not occurring.
Thank you.
I have a question for Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, go ahead.
Supervisor Johnson, you indicated that there were 75 employees.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, or is that employees and families? Can you give me a little clarification on that, please?
What I was informed was that 75 employees had been quarantined. I'm not sure if that's because they had it, or a family member, you know, could have had it, and they were staying home so as not to bring the virus to the county.
And Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson and Johnson, the policy that was approved, the personnel policy that was approved previously by the board required that anybody that was sick, had any type of symptoms, stayed at home, and were not allowed to come to work for a period of time. And that, you know, is COVID-related, but it doesn't mean that they were tested positive for that particular, to have COVID virus. So, if, you know, the person's family was sick, or if that individual was sick, or if they had any contact or potential contact, those employees were not allowed to come to work. I think that's what Supervisor Johnson is referring to.
Right, and that's a much larger number than what I'm looking for. The number that I'm trying to nail down is the exact number of our employees that have contracted COVID-19, and we probably don't have that information yet.
That is correct. I do not have that information.
Okay, because the universe is a little bit complicated in the fact that we may have employees with family members, or distant family members, or suspected associations that are staying home for the safety of others.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, go ahead.
I would ask if Supervisor Watson would consider changing his motion. As we sit as a Board of Supervisors, I would feel more comfortable if we said Mojave County is open for business, you know, and we're recommending that all offices are open, not And I guess if the other electeds have a problem, they could submit that to us so that the public knows which departments aren't open.
And Madam Chairman, that would necessarily have to exclude the courts, I believe.
Well, we could exclude them, but I mean, they can just report to us whatever their plan for opening is, so that we have one voice speaking and not every elected official trying to set up their own program.
First off, I'm sorry, Chairman Bishop, if I may answer that question. I do think, first off, we ought to separate the courts, just absolutely separate. The Administrative Office of the Courts, the Arizona Supreme Court, they administer the courts, and really, they're going to have their own policies and procedures, and we just need to just set them off to the side. The question of the elected, I just have concerns about the supervisors telling the other elected officials what they can and cannot do in their own offices. There is a separation between offices. You know, the supervisors have certain authorities, and the duties and responsibilities that the supervisors have is set by statute and so on. But then you also have, you know, the county attorney, and the assessor, the recorder, the treasurer, and the other elected officials, and they have certain duties and responsibilities. In this instance, I think you really ought to leave those elected officials to run their own offices. That's, and I think that's what the county manager was trying to get at.
And Madam Chairman, it's not saying that they're not. Right now, we're, Facilities is working, going to be working very diligently with the assessor's office to put up the sneeze shields, to allow them to open their doors and to start serving, personally serving the public. So, but that was one of the reasons that I had excluded them, because I was, I had questions about whether the board could direct. The board has control, obviously, over the elected officials' budgets, but I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to Ryan on the operational aspects.
I think the county manager is correct. You know, the supervisors control the budget, the per spring, so to speak. But if Supervisor Johnson, and I think I understand fully what you're getting at, is we want to have one voice and that one direction, rather than confusion between the different offices. If you're suggesting Supervisor Johnson that the county supervisors recommend to those other offices they do these things, then absolutely, we could do that. The supervisors can do that. Is that what you're suggesting Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Esplin, that's what I'm suggesting. But more importantly, people look to the board as being the voice of Mojave County in total. And I think if we put out through our PIO or through our website, Mojave County is opening back up with these restrictions, and we say, "The courts are doing this, the sheriff is doing that, the treasurer," because people get confused very easily if we say Mojave County is opening up, but it's just our few little things that we control. They don't understand that. They think that the treasurer, the assessor, the recorder, the school superintendent, everybody else is following our lead. I just tried to make it so it's clarified, and if those other departments have a problem, they can let us know, and we can put those on our website or through a press release.
Yeah, so that way, you would still leave the discretion to the elected officials, but they would notify you and say, "Yeah, this is how we're doing it, this is how we're handling it," so to speak. Is that correct Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that would be the addition of "recommend" to the proposal of the motion?
Yes.
As an adverb, is that correct?
But we still need to have, you would amend your motion, and we'd also need an amended second as well.
And then we also have the library that
Well, we have the street.
Unless we change it, they are set to open on the 20th.
In the motion, we've selected the three exclusions. So, all we need to do is add "recommend" to the motion.
Yes, I believe so. I don't understand fully what exactly the motion is, but I understand the first one, but to recommend, so we're, what do we recommend?
Recommending the opening of Mojave County offices for our constituents. Would you please read the motion?
Yeah, let's reread the motion if you could. Do you have it?
In accordance with CDC guidelines.
So, the motion reads recommending opening up May 11th to the rest of the county, all but elected officials, library and limited to the public, in accordance with CDC guidelines.
What I would suggest would be opening up Mojave County on May 11th, because I think that's what your intent was, moving, opening up Mojave on May 11th, following CDC guidelines and Department of Health guidelines, public health guidelines. But as to the three that have been excluded, those three, so it's the courts, the library, and the elected official offices, those will be up to each of those respective governing authorities, but we recommend that they also follow through with what Mojave County is doing.
So moved.
Is that, okay.
So, Supervisor Johnson, you're amending your motion to reflect...
Well, actually, I need to rescind my original motion and adopt the new motion, is that correct?
Yes.
So, my rescinding it would necessitate his rescission of his second?
Yeah, yeah, once you rescind your first motion, that's taken away that second, so we need a second on this new one.
Okay, so all we need is a second on the new one.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we're looking for a second. I'll second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you Supervisor Watson.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Esplin, for your patience.
Okay, at this time, I'd like the clerk of the board to read a statement that should have been read at last meeting's call to the public, and it was inadvertently not printed out and therefore not read. So, if you could please read that into the record.
My name is William Telewigler. I live on Mesquite Road in Dolan Springs. First, I would like to say that I will do my best to keep this submission to less than three minutes, but it will be difficult as I and my fellow Mojave County residents have questions and concerns with the current COVID-19 pandemic and the way it is being handled by our local, state, and federal elected representatives. All of the following comments and questions are my own, and are in no way meant to belittle an individual or county representative. One, in regard to our county and state recreational facilities being open while Nevada and California's remain closed in the interest of public health, has there been any discussion by the Board of Supervisors with their counterpart representatives in other states of the fact that their constituents are basically bypassing the direction of their home states by coming to Mojave County to utilize our facilities? If we are indeed all in this together, and if the utilization of these facilities is determined to be a health hazard to their home states, shouldn't they be just staying at home instead of posing possible health hazards to us in Mojave? The alternative would be for the visitors to contact their representatives and demand that their facilities are opened up on their side. We are all for visitation and tourism, but not at the possible risk of our health. Two, I have watched each and every BOS meeting and press conference since March 18th, and I realize that this is an evolving situation that changes in direction may be necessary at times. That being said, on April 20th, the meeting, Mojave County Department of Public Health stated that we were about two weeks behind metro Phoenix area in terms of when we expect to plateau in case counts. But at the April 30th meeting, the board seemed to change direction toward trying to open businesses ASAP in spite of case count growing. Why the change? Three, essential versus nonessential businesses. First of all, I'd like to say that there is no such thing as nonessential businesses. Each and every business, large or small, are essential to the owners, the employees, the people that provide their stock, and all of their families. The local, state, and federal guidelines all seem geared towards ensuring that large businesses and big-box stores stay open, but they are doing little to nothing to ensure that the smaller businesses are able to survive these trying times. Each and every one of these small businesses can modify their operation to include social distancing, and if required, to wear face masks just the same as large stores. The smaller businesses are the lifeblood of our community and deserve the same, if not more, consideration as the large corporations. What, if anything, has the Board of Supervisors done to relay this to the governor? Four, I may, I have many more questions and concerns, but as I know that time is limited, I'd like to end with this one statement. I truly believe that all of our Board of Supervisors and all of the county officials are trying to do what they perceive to be the best for everyone within our community. There is a fine line between much that has been done by all levels of government and unconstitutionally, and in my opinion, you have all tread close to the line without crossing it to this point. That being said, I'm sure you're all aware, the mistakes have been made. I have no need nor desire to point out who made what mistakes, but I urge you all to take the time to consider each and every action that you make or do not make going forward. Everything you say or do not say, everything you do or do not do, and every contact you make or do not make has tremendous effect on all within the community. If there was ever a time for you to all do your best, now is that time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I also have a couple letters that I've shared with the board, but these letters are from two ladies that live in Dolan Springs, and they have very, very similar friends, and they go to the same places and everything, and they are on opposite ends of the spectrum as far as COVID-19. So, I'm just going to read parts of these letters into the record in respect for their comments that they wrote. The first one being from Charlotte Kiefer, a private citizen that wanted to give input. She says, "I want to see the state open on April 30th. I strongly believe that every person has the right to choose how they live their life and care for their health. Even if the state or Mojave County rescends the stay-at-home order, many will probably still not want to venture out because of the virus threat. Many will use the return to go back to work, do business, engage in social activities, et cetera. People can make choices. The number of cases and deaths in Mojave County are low. There are no cases in Dolan Springs, whereas cases seem to be centered around Kingman, Lake Havasu, and Bullhead. Given consideration that every Arizona county have, will have different needs, I think the county supervisors should decide the rules for reopening. Short of that, the governor should allow small communities with few numbers to open their businesses with efforts to keep it sanitized. I don't think there should be a limited number of folks that are able to gather. To do so is violating our rights to assemble, freedom of movement, et cetera. I can tell you, living in Dolan Springs, many members of our community want to have open places of worship, organizations that have social activities and educational opportunities. The Dolan Springs Community Council, the VFW, and the American Legion help us get out of the financial, social, emotional restrictions that we find ourselves through no fault of our own. In summary, the needs of the small rural communities should be considered differently than the large communities. I support 100% reopening of the state. This particular virus does not warrant the cure that was imposed, and the numbers are less than those that had died from the influenza or flu last year. Past viruses our county experienced have higher deaths and have little to no fanfare blowing things out of proportion. The states and counties and subsequent municipalities and agencies are going to experience shortfalls in this year's and next year's budget just based on our shutdown to date. Time to stop the bloodbath." So, her friend, also from Dolan Springs, Deborah Bibby, she wrote an opposite opinion. What are the guidelines for private social clubs for their bar area, i.e. the American Legion or the VFW? In Dolan Springs, the average age is over 65. The majority are way over 65 with CLPD and other underlying serious conditions. Because the sheriff's saying they are not going to find anyone or enforce your basic guidelines, both places are looking at opening, and sooner than the stay-at-home of May 15th. I do not see guidelines for these private veterans' clubs that everyone says I do not see guidelines for these private veterans' clubs that everyone says they care about so much. I'm all for opening up the county and the state because it could hurt people financially, mentally, emotionally, suicides, more drugs and alcohol abuse. It just, it doesn't open up, but come on. Is the VFW and Legion just collateral damage that you don't give strict guidelines or executive orders like you did for the nursing homes and long-term facilities? I feel you don't care about the seniors like you claim to. I understand everyone is getting restless, but this is a breeding ground for COVID-19, just like the nursing homes, long-term facilities. I understand, like in wartime, there are deaths, but I feel this is a death sentence. I understand the herd immunity that is also needed. I am a news junkie and a political junkie, but come on, using our elderly. I thought we were going to open the country, but look out for our elderly. Very few young come to the American Legion and the VFW. Do you know your veteran clubs in each county in Arizona? Maybe you should take a survey and gather data as soon as possible. Because of the sheriff writing that letter, he's not taking into consideration the seniors that go into these type of establishments. Most people are followers, not leaders, and listen to their government or their police authority. Too many people listen and believe without researching themselves. Shame on all Arizona government and the police force for not looking out for all of our elderly." And then she goes on to state what her background is, but, but she's concerned for the American Legion and the VFW because of their elder years. And Denise, she's posed a question that maybe you could answer, and before we close her today. What are the guidelines for private social clubs for their bar area? Is, is that considered a bar in, in the sense of definition?
I've looked at those executive orders, and what I'm referring to is the executive orders. That's really what's, what we're going to be looking at, is what the governor has ordered and following the executive orders. I don't recall anything about social organizations in them. I'd have to double-check. I haven't researched that, but I don't recall that I see that. As far as it is a bar, if they serve alcohol, that, to me, seems like it's going to be a bar, right? I mean, some of the places, they effectively serve alcohol, and it is, it is a bar. I would probably err on the side that that's probably a bar. But I, to be honest with you, I've never been in some of those, some of those establishments.
Chairman Bishop, I believe that the governor's executive order had to do with holders of liquor licenses, of which those social organizations hold those liquor licenses, so they would be under the governor's...
I agree. I agree. If they have a liquor license, then that would probably be a bar. You're right.
Yeah, that's a good point, Supervisor Watson. And they do carry a liquor license, so I'm sure that the governor would look at those as a bar-type facility.
Yes.
Rather than a long-term care facility or a rest home.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, well, we had...
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson?
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
I have a few questions for Director Burley.
Okay.
Mojave County was designated as one of the five top counties for being hit the hardest by this virus. When doing the math and looking over the statistics, it seems we have a mortality rate in the county of 10%, which is double that of the state and the U.S. Do you believe this is associated with our elderly population?
I do, yes.
It was also noticing a lot of comments on the Kingman Blitz testing, and it seems that people were thinking it was an antibody test. Can you clarify for the public what types of tests are being offered at the Blitz site?
Certainly. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. The testing that'll be available at these Blitz sites is COVID-19 testing, not antibody testing. It's purely COVID-19 testing.
All right, that's the only questions I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we go on to the next agenda item?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Denise if, where can small business people find the guidelines on how to maintain a safe atmosphere inside of their business?
That's a very good question, and I know there's a number of resources out there, and we can actually look at putting some of those on our website, some links to be helpful. So I will direct staff to search for those particular resources and add those to our webpage so that they can easily locate them and, and use that information in their reopening process.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll just encourage everyone to be safe and stay healthy, and we'll go on to agenda item number two. This will be a discussion on possible action, approval, approved submittal of an application for $153,709 in fiscal year 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant, federal funding for the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, and authorize the county manager to sign the application paperwork. This funding, if approved, will reimburse up to 40% of the county emergency management 2020, 2021 operating budget expenditures.
And Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just a correction that I was sent by Byron. It'll, we'll get 50% reimbursement. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, that's 50% reimbursement. Very good. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the consideration that the reimbursement is now 50%.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second?
Second. I do.
Okay, have a second by Supervisor Angus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We are now adjourned.